City Council, City of Blue Island, Tuesday, August 10th. City Council Chambers, 2434 Vermont Street, Blue Island, Illinois. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, free, and just as all. All right, the first three people on call.
Alden Johnson.
Here.
Alden Matoya. Alden Frida.
Here.
Alden Fairwell.
Here.
Alden McGee. Alden Carr.
Here.
Alden Roll.
Here.
Six.
All right, we've got a quorum. We have a presentation in general proceedings when you had a motion to approve the city council ministers July 13th and July 27th. Is there a motion? Motion by Alden Paramals or second. Alden Johnson on the question. If not, please do the roll.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Frida. Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden McGee. Oh, sorry. Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Five eyes.
Motion carries. All right, public comments. Any public comments? Any public comments? Our motion is moving on. We know business and new businesses. Your presentation by Ashley Palomo. It's all yours.
Hello.
There you go.
I'm David. Thank you all for your time today. I really appreciate it. I appreciate you all. So again, my name is Ashley Palomo, and I am a Blue Island resident of 28 years. Currently, I am finishing up my graduate program from the University of Wisconsin, Parkside, and for my capstone project, I will be sharing how litter may be blocking community growth within the city of Blue Island. Okay, so some topics that I will be covering today will be over environmental quality, negative impacts from litter, community survey overview that I created this past May, and then some possible solutions. So a little bit of background about myself. So part of the reason why I became interested in receiving my master's in sustainable management was actually when I was working here in Blue Island as an AmeriCorps member, just across the street at Mr. Paul's and M.A.O. Services once they, when they were still here in 2016. So an AmeriCorps member is a public service worker supported by the federal government and other donors. One day, my coworker and I decided to just pick up some litter in the parking lot just adjacent from City Hall. And just as a weekly task, we found lottery tickets, baby diapers, cigarette butts. Oh, thank you so much, yes. Okay, hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes.
Okay, perfect. So sorry about that. Okay, so a part of the reason I became interested in this program, and I'll just go all through, you know, just getting by a little bit more. So a couple of things that we found at the adjacent parking lot by City Hall were lottery tickets, baby diapers, cigarette butts, plastic bags, cans, and just a many, a couple of many other items. It wasn't until one day that I realized that after continuously picking up this waste, that the waste would continue to return if the community was not aware of the effects of litter. So back then, I also didn't realize how litter was connected to community growth. But now, through my research, I have found that litter can negatively impact residents' health, create social issues, for example, less people interacting outside, decrease property value, and affect nature and wildlife. And then next, I will be covering the importance of environmental quality in Blue Island. So here, you can see the definition of environmental quality. So according to the community toolbox, environmental quality preserves community resources like water, air, and soil. It creates a better quality of life, enhances the aesthetic character of community, while also attracting new environmental friendly businesses. This will sustain economic health. Putting environmental quality at the forefront will attract visitors and new residents, while also helping to preserve Blue Island's history. Environmental quality will also protect Blue Island from environmental disaster and protect endangered species. In figure one, you will see what is needed to have a healthy community. So in this next, in the next few slides, I will show how litter can negatively impact residents' health, impact nature and wildlife, create social issues, and decrease property value. And again, these are just examples. So litter impacts residents' health. With accumulation of litter, rodents will gather. While there are fewer than 1,000 cases per year, a resident or a pet may become infected with leptospirosis, which is a bacterial disease spread through urine of an infected animal, like a rat. Figure two shows that in, what some ways an individual may get infected. When litter degrades, chemicals and micro particles are released. For example, cigarette butts that are left will emit toxins like arsenic and formaldehyde. Lastly, from this slide, during the pandemic, we all tried to find green spaces that we can get outside of our houses. But a study by Botanic Conservancy found that litter affects the moods of those where litter is present. Okay, so next, so litter impacting nature and wildlife. So while these same toxins from cigarettes affect humans, they will also pollute the soil, water, and air, and will come in dangerous contact with innocent wildlife. This was actually one of the reasons why I did decide to join this program as well. Just, I don't know if you guys have seen the video of a stropping pulled out of a turtle's nose that just impacted me a lot, and it is one of the reasons why I believe that litter should be removed from the streets as well. Okay. An item can be thrown away, but not all garbage bins are emptied or had a secure closure. The picture on the bottom left is a clogged sewer with garbage and leaves. Leaves and grass clippings in our waterways can contribute to algae growth. As this plant material decomposes, it uses up oxygen in water and can kill fish and other aquatic wildlife. So litter decreasing property value. According to the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning, communities can be impacted by flooding and make them less desirable. It will cause deterioration within buildings, streets, sidewalks, and other properties. The Center for Neighborhood Technology found that wet basements decrease property value by 10 to 25% and are found to be the main reason individuals do not purchase a home. According to a Chicago Tribune article by Donna Bigroy, many Blue Island residents cannot afford to continuously fix damaged property caused by flooding, which makes it more difficult to sell their property. Litter causing social and financial issues. According to the city of Chicago, individuals are more likely to litter if it is already present. A study by Keep America Beautiful says that individuals have no sense of ownership for parks, walkways, and other public spaces, and are more likely to litter. These feelings are costing Blue Island money by keeping businesses and outsiders away from Blue Island. Businesses get to choose where they want to do business, how they see fit in the community, and how it would benefit them as well. While there are less businesses in Blue Island, there will be less of a financial gain. And there's also a picture on the right just saying why it is important to shop local. This next slide is the survey that I conducted back in May. Thank you for those who did take part in my survey. I appreciate it. So going over the survey that I created, these questions ranged from residents' level of concern of litter, whether they believed it caused flooding, and if they would be interested in attending an educational workshop. One gap that I did unfortunately find was individual, individuals are more than 50% interested in attending an educational workshop if I were to provide one, but said the individuals that need this program and the workshop, which unfortunately not attend. This is where solutions for that gap are needed. And those are just a couple of questions and pie graphs that are part of my survey. And some possible solutions that I have found are that we can bring in AmeriCorps members like myself, that I had participated for two years here in Blue Island. So it is a short term and cheaper solution, and it would help create and implement programs to the community. And it also will create, for example, for individuals like me, it will create a bigger passion for their own community and a passion to help others as well. The next option is to create a sustainability department for the city of Blue Island. For example, in Portland, Oregon, the Borough of Planning and Sustainability develops, created and practical solutions to enhance Portland's livability, preserve distinctive places, and plan for a resilient future. Both of these options create jobs, educate residents, while also bringing a sense of community to Blue Island. And this wraps up my presentation. I appreciate all of you guys for your time. If you guys have any questions, I am more than happy to answer those. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any questions from the aldermen? I know that I've talked to Palomo before, who passed as community development chair and now is mayor. We've increased our average council on Western Avenue. We have 33 more that are ready to go out as soon as I have time. I'm not ready to go. Been very busy few weeks. But, and our public works department and the contractor does the parking lots at height on picking up the garbage on a weekly basis. So I'm from the deeper of the broken window theory. I think everybody's heard that before, where if you let one house or one area start getting blighted, the other person's not going to care as much, and the other person's not going to care as much. I think this fits into line with what we all want to see in Blue Island. It must look good. So less garbage on the streets, people take care of their homes or businesses, and everything goes from there. So thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
I have four city officials and the mayor. I'll start off with asking for a moment of silence. We lost a 22-year employee of the city of Blue Island that I think everybody in this room gets to met or had interactions with. John Durango is building commissioner for 22 years, and I want to take a moment of As many of you know, Blue Island lost a good friend this week with the passing of John Durango. On behalf of the city of Blue Island, we send our deepest condolences to the Durango family. John serves building official for Blue Island for more than 22 years. This morning, he hung the purple and black bunting in front of City Vault to commemorate and memorialize John in honor of his service to the city. My family, I know I've had a lot of interactions with John over the years, having multiple properties in town, and also as a friend. I worked with the Park District for years, and I also became commissioner of the Park District, and I worked with his brother Mark. A Blue Island family, their mother still lives in town here down by Eisenhower, a lot of ties here for many, many years. So, um, so that's the reason for the bunting, but I'm pretty sure everybody heard about this credit. Um, the city is moving forward with plans to fully demolish the Maple Tree. I know I gave an update on this, at least at the committee meeting a while ago. We're in court. It's moving forward and looking like it's looking good. We can take that down. As we discussed at our last meeting, we have plans to revitalize Old Western Avenue, and this is part of that plan to help entice future development and clean up the blighted area that has been applied for the area for over two years, along with a few other properties on Old Western Avenue. So I wanted to give an update. It's still in court, and it's moving forward. I hope and have it now by September, but one thing at a time. We continue to work to address the rad issues in our alleys. I keep pest control company has been responding to every single complaint that's been coming through the office. District 130 recently made changes to the box food delivery program, which helped eliminate at least the food sitting on people's porches and back doors for a week at a time, which by the pest control company probably leads to the, one of the issues why we have seen an increase in the rad problem. If any aldermen are getting reports of rad screen conditions, please make sure to forward the Beverly doors to my office, and we're getting right on top of it. I know Alden Johnson sent one today about a WASP issue. We're going to take care of this. It's probably, again, like I said at the last meeting, we'll probably address the appropriations because it is a newer problem for our town, at the aggressive level that it's been seeing the last six months.
Thank you.
Later this week, and next week, Amazon will continue filming the TV show Light Years and around our PlayStation. Recently received checks over $12,000 for use of space and police overtime. We'll be receiving additional $10,000 for filming this week, and that goes to the ordinance that was passed, who are following the ordinance. And I was also texted earlier today by the owners of the hospital. They have a filming company that wants to come in, which I'll forward to staff, and same ordinance would apply. Upcoming events, we have the Christmas light parade on December 4th. Alden, former Alden Tom Hawley and Clorophrain Cantello and a few others have met already a few times, and they're putting that together, but that's the first Saturday since in December, like it always is. It's December 4th. And the Rock Around the Clock is on New Year's Eve, which is a short event. We're working with the owner of the clock on Western and Vermont, and we put them in touch with, the clerk has put them in touch with the company that will repair the clocks. We actually have an operating clock for New Year's Eve, and hopefully we can have a successful event for that also. That's all I have. Very short Halloween hours around the agenda. I didn't want to forget this. It seems like a few times in a row, we forgot about voting this, and we did include in the resolution, if you didn't already see it, CDC guidelines in case things change. So automatically this one, I can bring it up again. So that's all I have on my comments. We have a motion to approve payroll in the amount of $334,863.91 gross amount for August 6th, 2021. Is there a motion?
Aye.
Motion by Alden Frida. Is there a second? Alden Roll on the question. Please do the roll.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Frida.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Six eyes, honor.
Motion carries. I know this one, the amount is going to be changed because of an error under the Christmas decorations. It's actually twice the cost. It was a double vote. It was a mistake, so I think I need to get a new amount here. Promotion for approval accounts available for, this is the new amount. I'll, I'll take the motion second on the question. Motion by Alden Paramals or second. Alden Roll. All right, Mr. Patazka. I think it's $25,000, right?
Approximately. I think it was 20 or 25.
So it would be $580? $580 to $11.98. Correct. $580 to $11.98. All right, your motion is second. Is there any questions? Please do the roll.
Alden Johnson.
No.
You say no?
Yes, ma'am.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Frida.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden, uh, Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Five eyes.
Motion carries. Number three, motion to consent to mayor's appointments for planning and zoning work deals. And these are the names I asked the aldermen last week. I received a couple. I have a job of 14 people down to seven, and these are my choices that I hope you approve and consent to, because we have some things on the docket that need to be moving with timeline soon. I made Dave Johnson, Dave, if you want to stand up. I'm appointing him chair. He has experience with NADAL Analytics, and I don't want to be too personal, but he's got an act of these kind of things. Jason Berry has been on the committee for a long time. Dave Brown, small business owner, been on the committee for a long time. AJ Weir, also a committee member, has been on there for a while. Sam Jones, I see you. Stand up. You're also current committee member now.
Yes.
Annette Alexander, former alderman. And Michael Cendy, who's also on the current member of the zoning. So majority of people that are on both committees, so a lot of experience. And I think this is what we need to do and move forward, a lot of progressive thinking. We have some things on the docket that have to start moving, so I'm asking for consent. I did reach out to the aldermen this time, and I plan to do that for any vacancy. I know it's my choice, but I wanted to include in case someone reached out to you here and said they, they very interested in this. That's what I have. So is there a motion? Motion Alden Paramals or second. Alden Matoya on the question. Please do the roll.
Alden Johnson.
Uh, aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Frida.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Six eyes, honor.
Motion carries. Thank you. And executive session, I can mention the stuff on the docket if you don't already know, but we have some timelines we have to abide by to entice the business to express interest. And so this is kind of, I was going to wait a few meetings, but I know we've gone now. Thank you. Number four, with resolution 2021-34, a resolution of the city of Blue Island for County Illinois, setting the date and hours for trick or treating in the city of Blue Island, 2021. I already mentioned that it's already included through a little word in there. CDC recommends against, we can always make changes, so we're not tied to this, but it's the same hours they've always been, 3:00, 7:00, 10:00. Is there a motion? Motion by Alden Frida, second by Alden Roll on the question. Seeing none, please do the roll.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Frida.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Six eyes, honor.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Alden, can I add my trick or treat?
Your city clerk's business right around, so you might as well. Got to add to your board. Home city clerk's business announcements. I already did mine, so.
All right, docket is pending for August 28th. If you plan on participating, you don't have a business on Western Avenue, please call me or see me, because we have vendors at the park and it's no charge. Again, the welcome bags are in. The Browns are composing a letter to send out to all the businesses. If you would like to contribute something to, I have 250 bags, and I'm also going to do folders for all the, like, for the apartment buildings, because there's such a big turnover. So I'm going to be working on that. I'm hoping by October 1st, we have everything ready to go. There's a block party, I think I sent that out already, at 2829 57, 142nd Place, from 11 to 7:30 on Saturday. Next, I think I sent that to. The Sarah Brown wanted to tell you, there's a porch concert Saturday at 12905 Greenwood. Bring chairs and blankets Saturday at 7 o'clock, and they just take donations for the, I think it's like three different organizations, is that correct?
Primarily a circle society, I believe, is the outline.
Yeah, so that's on Saturday at 7 o'clock. I put in front of you is the vehicle updates. We are up from last year at this time, so I can send you guys up. Police Department is doing a great job. I think Dennis, how many tickets was there to Blue Island? 900 something?
Yeah, right around 1,000.
For, just for vehicle stickers. So that's pretty awesome, and we're still working on it every day, so people are coming in, and the resident parking is working also. Just so you know, if anybody's been in City Hall, a couple of us have taken apart the old mayor heart's office. It was filled with boxes from the floor to the ceiling, and we have Castro's closet, the old vault, that's the back of the first floor, and the whole hallway. And it's all been organized, labeled, waiting for our attorneys to, they're contacting recycling and make sure we follow the correct steps. So we're waiting, you know, forward to the line.
Mountains and mountains of, uh...
It's, I mean, it's all labeled though, so we can tell you where it begins at, and everything is organized by category. So obviously, we're headed forward to, we have directions, so that's what we're waiting for. And the lawyers are, we're hoping to do a, instead of, there's still a lot of rooms that need to be cleaned out and organized, but we're going to do this first, and then we're going to re-group, and then start the other rooms. We're talking about, what, four more rooms and adding?
We didn't know existed next to Martin Miller's office that just goes on, on boxes for seeing what he had for days.
Does, we pull up the stairs in front of the vault, there's just a huge amount of file boxes, and nothing's labeled really, so we're going to do it, working on that a lot. A special thank you to everyone that participated in the fireworks, the police department, I can't even remember, police department, fire department, district 130, city of Blue Island. Everyone's worked really hard to make a safe environment. I mean, on Friday, with somebody to do, to expand, make it a little bit better for next year. The next year's date is going to be July 3rd. It's done.
July 3rd.
National night out, with the police department working very hard. It was a success. The kids loved it. Everything was free. It was huge. It was a very, it was nice to see the club come out and enjoy themselves and not pay for anything, so that was really nice. Other than that, I think that's all I got.
I'll add also that the, there's another bids coming in for other streets that I've always been working on from last year, that are part of the TIP, that were engineered, and waiting for those bids to come in. 119th and a couple of side streets, and then the alley on 119th Street. Columns, we're waiting for just a contractor to now start, that's been approved at the last council meeting. And there's a multiple, multitude of safe schools on stuff that needs to be wrapped up and finished, and we're trying to get that stuff rolling. And a lot of these contractors responding to the same things that we're hearing, over and over, getting lack of labor, they don't want to do the job, but they could give us a little more time. Roof bids, even though we advertised it, put it on our Facebook and our website, and called, I know me and Mark Patazka and Tom have called five or six companies ourselves, we only received one bid, and it's higher than we expected, so we're going to recommend going out with a bid again in committee. To say it now, it's a little higher than I expected, but even our local company in town here said they don't, we have so many jobs lined up with the labor, we don't want to bid, take on more than they can chew. So we're going to go out to bid again for the roof, it seems. So if you know anybody that does commercial roofs, it's going to go out to bid again. Like, I'm sorry, I added it here first.
That's okay.
It'd be more smarter than I do about this. Thank you. Anything else?
Nothing.
City treasurer.
I know on Osmond, I do have, including Pecker was the report, month of before ending July 31st, 2021. Motion for approval.
Is there a motion? Motion Alden Frida, second by Alden Roll on the question. Please do the roll.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Frida.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Six eyes, honor.
Motion carries. Thank you. Can you help say that? All right, city attorney.
My resolution today is to ratify the intergovernmental agreement relating to the fiscal year 2021 Justice Assistant Grant or JAC program award. We discussed this in the committee of the hall, it was approved to move forward, and had to be signed last Friday. So it was signed, and this resolution will ratify that signature and approve the contract.
Is there a motion? Motion Alden Johnson, the second Alden Carr. Any questions? Please do the roll.
Alden Johnson.
Aye.
Alden Matoya.
Aye.
Alden Frida.
Aye.
Alden Fairwell.
Aye.
Alden Carr.
Aye.
Alden Roll.
Aye.
Six eyes, honor.
Motion carries. Thank you. City attorney, report.
I have any ready to answer?
All right, thank you. Any alderman have announcements or course comments? Alden Johnson?
Yes, I got a couple of, maybe one, Blue Cross, Blue Shield, located on 119th, where the old target was at in Marshfield. They're actually hiring for 50 customer representatives. So if anybody, you know, knows someone who needs employment, that they are hiring. And of course, Deer Point, where Matt and clerk mentioned about the block party for 142nd place, that's actually Deer Point, if some people are confused or if they want to participate. Also, trying to make a push for getting vaccinated, Blue Island. I was kind of hard myself coming to terms with getting vac, vaccinated myself, and I deal with a lot of children. And so I didn't do it for me, I did it for them. Kids that's under 12 years old, they can't get vaccinated. A lot of them, their immune systems are still developing, as well as older people with compromising immune systems and things of that nature. So if we're in any kind of engagement with those type of people, that, that infection has killed a lot of people, and I just want my city to be safe. And there's a few places here in Blue Island that you can get vaccinated for free. County Hospital, off Western, even Affordable Housing has, is working with IDPH, that's free. And Love and Robbins, as well as Stroger, are doing it for free. So if you don't do it for yourself, do it for your nieces, your grandkids, or whom, whom else, your elderly relatives. Now I wanted to add, the next thing I wanted to add was, what you were saying, mayor, about the ropes and things, if you guys have garbage cans, because squirrels sometimes bite holes in things inside of them, and try to use something caustic, like bleach, or a homey to pour in it or on it, and try to keep them away. But rats are survival specialists. So even when you have dogs and cats, please use your pooper scoopers and get rid of the droppings, because the rats will feed off the droppings as well, if nothing else is left. And the, that's, that's it.
Thank you. Any other Alvin comments? Alderman Rita.
I just wanted to mention, last week was the St. Canucks Carnival, and I just wanted to give a shout out to the Blue Island Police Department, they did a great job with policing the area, walking, driving, et cetera, and it made it a nice, fun, and safe environment, so thank you for that. And then also to add to what you were talking about, Dex, Alderman Johnson. Tomorrow at Eisenhower High School, between 1:30 and 3:30, they're going to have free COVID vaccines for 12 and up, and that's for any, any, you don't have to be a student. And free flu vaccines, and also the MBC4 vaccine, which you need to register for school if you're a senior. It's the meningitis, I think. It, if you don't have insurance, they're going to charge $148. But if you have your insurance card, that's just for the meningitis shot, it'll cover it. And that's going to be put on through Jewel Osco. So that's tomorrow at Eisenhower High School, between 1:30 and 3:30.
Thank you, any comments? Now one please, Alderman Paramo.
I just wanted to check in on the subject of the approval of the engineering firm. The city attorney was good enough to give us an opinion about it. And reading the documents she provided, and looking at her past history, it does appear that past history was to put the appointments up before city council. With a motion second, you know, either approve or disapprove.
I have an Alvin, and we've had good communication, and I think putting on the agenda tomorrow, I can discuss.
All right.
So we'll go through the process.
Okay, fine.
And I did that because we've had such good committee meetings so far.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Alderman Steve-O, would you accept my clap from me today before I forget again? Alderman, thank you. Thank you, Alderman Steve-O. All right, we're going to go into executive session briefly, I believe, right? Okay, is there a motion about executive session? Alderman Carr, second by Alderman Roll, any question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Go into executive, we'll come back out. Need a motion to resume our regular session, Alderman Fairwell, Alderman Roll, any question? All in favor, we're moving, moving back into a regular session, so move. All right, so we've heard we talked about some litigation in executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Just a very good question. In the minutes that we just moved, I meant to point out, if it was the last executive session, there's no line about what we said if we came up with executive session. Okay, just look at the end.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you. All right, a motion to adjourn to the city council meeting, Alderman Johnson, second by Alderman Roll, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?